Good evening, I'd like to call to order the September 4th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have a full complement of nine councilors. Welcome back everyone, from a nice holiday.
Thank you. Would you please stand for a salute to the flag? And Dr. Grenier, welcome. Would you lead us in this pledge, please?
Honored.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I don't believe we have any recognitions, awards, and memorials this evening. So we are on to public hearings. No, it's not. There it is now. Is that better?
I couldn't hear you.
Is it better now? Yes?
For the time you said "a little."
How's that?
Thank you.
We're good? Okay. All right, so, the first item is 2018-253 Public Hearing on the Merit Property Kolnaski Property Conversion. Madam Clerk, are you reading the public hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay, so notices hereby given that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-131-N, a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on September 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in Community Room 1 at Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, to receive comments on the town's proposal to release all legal use restrictions, including that maybe only as open space and for recreational purposes now on a parcel of land commonly known as the Merit Property, 0 Groton Long Point Road, pin number 260-80917-6052E, estimated approximately $458,000 of value, and to place comparable land use restrictions on specific portions, a specific portion of comprised of approximately 38 acres along the western and northeastern borders of the overall parcel otherwise commonly known as the King-Kolnaski Property, 500 Paquonic Road, where the overall parcel bears pin number 1688-08984028E. The approximate 38 acres has been appraised at $155,000. Restrictions are specifically applicable only to the approximate 38 acres. The town proposes to build a new middle school on the Merit Property, including outdoor recreational facilities. After the comprehensive analysis of many sites, the town has determined that Merit Property is best situated for this use, and other valuable land in part because of its central location immediately adjacent to the existing town high school. The Merit Property loops, slopes from the top of Fort Hill down to Fort Hill Brook and has somewhat land resources. The approximately 38 acres of the King-Kolnaski Property includes, among other attributes, wetlands, varied ledges, and portions of creek. The placement of use restriction of these approximate 38 acres is in addition to the proposed placement of use restriction on the Boulder Heights Property, which was the subject of previous public hearing. Maps depicting the Merit Property and the approximate 38 acres of the King-Kolnaski Property are available on the town's website, and copies will be available at the Planning and Development Services Office at Town Hall Annex. This was dated the 21st of September, excuse me, of August. It ran in the day. It also was repeated a week later on the 28th in the day, per statute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So this evening, we have the public hearing, and we have several people signed up to speak. If you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. First, we have Zell Stever, followed by Sue Sutherland.
Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. If you could wait one minute, Mr. Stever.
Good evening. I'm Deb Jones. I'm the Assistant Director in Planning and Development Services. Merit Property was purchased with bond money and state open space grant money in 1989. It's to be used only as open space and recreation. In order to have it be used for anything other than that, you have to have a public hearing. The town has to provide comparable land to be devoted to recreation or conservation, and the Commissioner of DEEP must approve the substitute parcel. The town has been working with the DEEP since 2015 to find a suitable parcel. Twenty-three properties were originally reviewed, eleven made the shortlist. Boulder Heights, a 20-acre parcel off of Culver Avenue, has been approved by the DEEP as a suitable property. It was the subject of a February 2018 public hearing. In addition to Boulder Heights, the town will be placing a conservation easement on about 38 acres of land on the Kolnaski Elementary School Property, also known as the King Property. So this process is governed by Section 7-131-N of the Connecticut General Statutes. The comparable replacement property has to be provided in order to take land intended for use as park or other recreational or open space purposes. The replacement has to be at least equal in value and per unit area size, and the town has to provide reasons for the taking of the park land rather than any other land. So just to get you oriented, these are the property locations I've been talking about. On the right side of the screen is the Merit Property. Up near I-95 is Boulder Heights, and then on the left side is the King Property, which is a portion of the Kolnaski Elementary School. This is the Merit Property. You can see it does slope from east to west down to Fort Hill Brook. There are some wetland resources on it. I just want to point out that the house and the field at the top of the hill is not part of this conversion. That property was purchased with other funds. So the Merit Property is 34.64 acres, is appraised at $458,000. The 1989 purchase price was $700,000. This is the King Easement area on the west side of the Kolnaski Elementary School. You can see that there are wetlands on the site, there's a water course, there's definitely significant ledge, there's ledge outcrops, there's steep slopes. Thirty-eight point seven-seven acres. The appraised value of the Conservation Easement area is $155,000, and as I said, it's a portion of the 128-acre Kolnaski School Property. It also has the headwaters of Birch Plain Creek, and the Plan of Conservation and Development recommends a trail be constructed through this area. So why the Merit Property for the middle school? It was chosen for the proximity to Fitch High School, the central location in town. Transportation and operational efficiencies will be afforded by this property. The middle school will be able to use Fitch Senior High School facilities, and it will also allow advanced middle school students to take classes at the high school. So I'm going to scroll back to the property location map so that you can take information from the public questions, and that we can use that as a reference.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Burt, before we begin the public comment portion?
Okay.
All right, so first up, we have Zell Stever, followed by Sue Sutherland. And again, just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you very much. We have one for Betsy, too. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zell Stever. I live at 81 Main Street. Thank you for holding this public hearing tonight, and I would like to go on record as supporting the proposed release of the deed restriction on the Merit Property in a swap for the open space lands of the Boulder Height Property and the 38-acre parcel of land on the western side of the Kolnaski School, the former King Property. This land swap allows us to build a new middle school, receive state funding for this construction, while protecting open space lands in Groton. The Town Council, the Town Manager, are to be commended for taking the necessary time and steps under Connecticut statutes to make this land swap. It is my understanding that Connecticut Superior Court, in consultations with both the Connecticut Department of Environment, Energy and Environment, DEEP, and the Connecticut Attorney General, have authorized this land deed restriction swap. I wish to commend the town for working with the Groton Board of Education, DEEP, the AG, and Superior Court, and our local environmental and conservation organizations to bring about a swift and smooth resolution to this matter. Further, the Groton Open Space Association, GOSSA, Avalonia Land Conservancy, and the Groton Conservation Advocates should all be recognized for a quick, open, and effective response to the situation the town faced last winter, and for working diligently to find alternative lands for an appropriate land swap of equal value. Thank you for all making this a priority and getting the job done. I appreciate your efforts to work on the relevant educational, legal, and environmental issues to bring this matter to a conclusion that will benefit us all in the town. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stever. Sue Sutherland, followed by Jessie Stratton.
Dear Mayor Granatowski and Town Councilors, my name is Sue Sutherland, 32 Neptune Drive in Groton, and I'm speaking as a private citizen. I support the choice of the King-Kolnaski Property on Paquonic Road as an appropriate substitution for the Merit Property. I want to compliment Groton's Town Manager, John Burt, for leading us through this rigorous process, and also the Town Council and each of the many citizens groups involved for the collaboration as we work together towards this great solution. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Jessie Stratton, followed by Eugenia Villagra. I'm sorry. I should be able to say that by now.
Good evening, Mayor Granatowski, Town Council Members, and Town Manager Burt. My name is Jessie Stratton, and I live at 31 Spring Street in Groton, and I'm here to voice my very strong support for releasing the restrictions on the Merit Property and instead add the addition of the King-Kolnaski Property to the previously approved 28 Boulder Heights Property, so as to constitute a land swap that is indeed of comparable value to the Merit Property. With the New London Superior Court's approval last month of adding a portion of the King-Kolnaski Property in the town's final action after this hearing, Groton will be able to proceed with the construction of a new middle school without jeopardizing critical state funding, thereby benefiting us all. Similarly, we all benefit from the preservation of valuable open space, and I applaud the Town Council and others for your early support of seeking a more equitable land swap to enable construction of the school in a timely manner, while ensuring that we also end up with equally desirable open space. The attentiveness and cooperation among the Council, Town Manager, DEEP, and the Attorney General to expeditiously reach a win-win outcome is indeed heartening. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Eugenia Villagra, followed by Craig Kohler.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your last name. Okay, thank you.
You're so gracious.
My name is Eugenia Villagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. I am speaking tonight as co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates. I'd like to begin by expressing my very deep appreciation for the Town Council and Town staff's hard, and most importantly, collaborative work to find a much better replacement for the protected town-owned Merit Property, which turned out to be the ideal site for a new middle school. The original town-proposed swap, the 20-acre Boulder Heights Property, recommended by the previous Town Council, was of far less ecological value than the 35-acre Merit Property, and would have diminished Groton's open space acreage and set a bad precedent. The King-Kolnaski Property, however, offers excellent recreational value and a better location on the west side of town, an area of Groton in need of more open space. The property features beautiful forested woodlands with dramatic rocky ridges suitable for hiking trails. The land also offers significant conservation values because of its large wetland area and a very rare white cedar grove. Birch Plain Creek runs through it and beyond to Baker Cove and Long Island Sound. This property has been on town lists for conservation for decades. This now court-appointed swap is of, court-approved swap, is of equal or greater monetary value as required by Connecticut law. The exchange includes both the King-Kolnaski Property, 38 acres valued at $155,000, and the Boulder Heights Property, 20-plus acres valued at $540,000, for the 35-acre Merit Property valued at $458,000. This Town Council and Town Manager together have made some very good lemonade out of some real lemons. Thanks to a process characterized by hard work and collaboration, excellent communications, and refreshing openness and transparency, Groton can now move forward to build a new middle school and protect Groton's open space for now and for future generations. This is effective government at its best, a win-win for all the people of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Kohler, followed by Richard Dixon.
I'm Craig Kohler, 263 Brook Street, Groton. I'm just here today to express my support for the proposal, and to give my thanks to the Council, and to the Town Manager, and to the Town Attorney for coming to this conclusion, to this matter, so that we can now move on with the school project. And again, I just wanted to thank all of you for your work that you did to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Dixon, followed by Joan Smith.
I live in Old Mystic on the Groton side, and I think I maybe started this whole thing back in 1988 when I came to the Council and suggested we buy open space, and the forethinking citizens of Groton amazingly agreed to spend $8 million to try to preserve for future generations some of our good town. Unfortunately, the way it was done left a little vagueness. But at this point, and I want to compliment you very much for having worked an amazing, I mean, six months ago, we were here, seven months maybe, and everything was black. Today, we're all here, everybody, Craig, everybody's on the same side trying to make this work. The letter I passed out was my letter of support. It goes into the details. What I'm concerned about, though, I think that this is a perfect win-win, as we've just said, for the town. We have, I think, a better conservation than what we had before. We have a new school. The process, however, is the problem, and I want to just remind you of that. You've done a great job. You stepped into this as a new council. You found on February 27th that there was a major problem. John Burt stepped up to a problem that he didn't, wasn't of his creation, but it was the creation of past councils, and they can't say that they didn't know about it. Back in 1995, this is an editorial in the Mystic Times, "Groton Open Space Lands Are Not Protected From Forgetful Misuse" by Councilor Paul Ann Sheets. Councilor Wright brought a resolution to the Council to try and make sure that we wouldn't run into these problems, because people sometimes don't understand the law and can make mistakes perhaps out of good intent. The big problem, however, was in 2005, they had an opinion from the Town Attorney that was just plain wrong. And that is my concern, that they did not have the advice that they should have had, and now we have to pay the same firm, I don't know how much, to correct the problem that they made back in 1995. I'm passing, they're fine attorneys. I know many of them personally. They're good. I don't know why that opinion, they even used my name in his opinion, or my statement I made, slightly out of context at that time. But I don't know why that opinion was given in the way it was. This is what I'm asking you, obviously, to support this. It's wonderful. You've gone through a court process in record time. I was involved in something similar in North Stowington, took five years to resolve it. You've done it in, what, two months, actually, by the time you got into the court? Amazing progress, wonderful. But look toward why this happened at all. It wasn't something that should have been a surprise. And then Craig and I wouldn't have gone out of the last meeting not speaking to each other, because he was so sure that I had blown all the work that he'd done, the good work to come up with that as the chairman. We're on the same page, Craig. But let's try to make sure that doesn't happen again. So again, I applaud you. Even the notice that Betsy read a few moments ago, Town Clerk, is so much better than the notice that was written, that was done for the February one. The one in February was to try to hide things. This one was to make sure we all knew exactly what was going on. So as you go forward, have this be something you remember, that you didn't have to have this crisis. It could have been avoided by good management through the process, good attorney advice, and again, the attorneys are excellent attorneys, but there was something that was amiss, and that's what I want you to make sure you look toward in the future, to make sure that we don't end up in this situation again. So appreciate your time, thank you very much, and I support this swap. I think we all come out ahead with it. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Joan Smith.
My name is Joan Smith. I live at 37 Island Circle South in Groton. I'm here as President of Groton Open Space Association, and our board has wholeheartedly approved and supported this exchange. We believe it is a fair exchange. We understand, and we try to save land in perpetuity, but we recognize that there are times when a decision has to be made, and there are competing values. But I think what's important here is that you have followed procedure, that there is a process, so that a change of land or restriction has the opportunity of public hearings, and that the properties that are swapped are of equal or greater value. And I think the original proposal was not quite there. I like the Boulder Heights. It's got a beautiful ravine. The brook goes ultimately to Baker Cove, the same as on the Kolnaski Property and the King Property. This brook there also goes to Baker Cove. And that's an impaired embayment. There's a factor of biological contamination, and we need to do what we can to make sure this cove stays clean, and that future development or redevelopment recognizes this, and that protection is made for our waterways. Protecting the Kolnaski/King Property will certainly do that, by preventing runoff and drainage there. There's another benefit to this property. It is part of the beginnings of a Western Green Belt in Groton. If you start at Bluff Point, and as the crow flies, go over to the airport, which has a very good grassland habitat, and then the Spicer Property, which is now Sparkle Lake, and then the town and the city own property on both sides, with the exception of a little gap where the golf course, 10th hole, is on the cove, and where EB has a parking lot across from the King Property. The rest of it is owned by the town, so there's recreational potential for a trail or some kind of activity involving the whole cove. Plus, you're helping to protect this waterway by protecting both properties, the Boulder Height and the Kolnaski Property. There's a high recreational value. The Kolnaski/King Property has beautiful rocky ridges. It has a very nice wetland. Electric Boat had remediated a contaminated site right next to it, so that's a very nice property now. We are sort of under the guideline of conserve, but also redevelop and undevelop, and this was a very good example of undevelopment there. And I want to commend you for having this process, allowing us to speak, and I encourage you, please, to do this in the future. We are committed to protecting land in perpetuity, and it's a very serious concern when someone has an alternate use for it, that we really need to have a full spectrum hearing, and you provided that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's everyone who's signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? If you could please come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I live at 12 Little Go Lane in Mystic. I have a problem with things that are legal but appear to me to be not moral, not ethical. I voted for the purchase of that land because it was going to remain open space forever. I don't know how long ago it was, it was probably a decade or two ago, when a Town Council member said at a meeting, discussion over another piece of land, "Well, why do we have to pay attention to this? We weren't the ones who voted for it." You represent the people who voted for this property to be always open space. I think we live in a country where legal takes precedence over morality and the ethics, and therefore, I object to this. I know you people worked very hard to do it, but you missed a piece of this. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back?
My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Mystic. I'm appearing as a citizen. I think this is the best solution that could be made for the problem that arose when the school took this property. I do wonder, what is the protection that now is afforded to the King Property parcel and to the Boulder Heights parcel? If someone wanted this for some other purpose in the future, what would have to be done? I believe that the, one of the protections that has resulted in the current solution is the fact that the state owned an easement on the land. Is there now another easement on the land, and if so, who owns it? Did the state transfer its easement on this, on the Merit Property to the new properties? I guess I'm just asking. We want to make sure that, as Attorney Dixon said, that this property is protected in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Chairman Watson.
Good afternoon. I am Kim Shepherdson Watson. I live on 175 Shenandoah Castle Parkway in the city, and I also serve on the Board of Ed. And I just wanted to say thank you for your diligence and hard work in being able to move this forward, and I just want to tell you that your friends on the Board of Ed are also very excited, and we're hoping to kind of continue to move this project forward on time and on budget, so that things can, the monies can be used for making the buildings as beautiful as they can be. So once again, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your tireless work in kind of moving this forward, and I am sure I'll be seeing you all sooner than maybe what you guys want, but I am looking forward to continuing our partnership for the betterment of the district and for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this particular public hearing? Seeing none. Mr. Burt, was there? Want to close it first? No? Well, that's what I was going to see, if Mr. Burt, did you want to respond to anything, or is this not the appropriate time?
Just to add, there will be conservation easements that DEEP and the state will have to approve and be placed on each of those two properties.
Did, okay, thank you. All right.
In my view, there's also a court case that spells it out.
Right.
And that has even greater.
And that has even greater sanction.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other comment. The public hearing closed at 6:34. Yep. Okay. So we are now on to the Public Hearing on the Ethics Ordinance, which is 2018-254, Public Hearing on the Ethics Ordinance and Ethics Commission. And Madam Clerk, you're going to read that again?
My turn.
Okay.
And an Ethics Commission. The full text of the proposed ordinance was on file, the Town Clerk's office, and on the town, and on the town website, and the website address was provided. This was dated Groton, Connecticut, on the 28th day of August 2018. It ran in the New London Day on that day. It was posted and still is posted on the website.
Thank you. Is there any presentation prior to that? So then we have one person who's signed up to speak for this public hearing. Michael Whitehouse. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Whitehouse, 600 Burdian Street, Exemption, Groton, Connecticut. I'm also the fourth district representative for the RTM.
Are you here as a private citizen, or as a representative of your district, sir?
A private citizen.
Thank you.
I guess the Ethics Ordinance is not as exciting as open land. So I was reading over the Ethics Ordinance. When I saw Ethics Ordinance, I was excited, because of course, ethics is important, how we run our government. You know, the opening to it says, "Public office is public trust. The trust of the public is essential for government to function effectively." And then I was a little bit disappointed that this so-called Ethics Ordinance is really just a financial conflict ordinance, which is good. Financial matters is much of what the government handles. However, I think it was Ms. French in the previous hearing made some comments about that. The way things are done, and what I was hoping to see in Ethics Ordinance, and actually, some other people in town mentioned this to me when they heard about an Ethics Ordinance, was some discussion of transparency in government. Because I've seen a number of occasions where it is difficult as a citizen, or even as a representative, to be able to get enough information to make an informed decision. You know, small things like the time of the town council meeting on the website being inaccurate, or the time of the meeting which is sent out to the RTM being inaccurate. This says 6:30, and the meeting occurred at 6:00. Or larger things, like the fact that there's no accompanying text with proposed ordinances that explains what the problem is that they're to solve, or how that they're going to solve them. So it requires considerable research to understand the town code. So an average citizen really can't have an informed opinion about what's coming before us. But that's not what this ordinance is, unfortunately. I hope we'll consider something later. However, I did see one thing here that concerned me, because it is certainly good that we're, we are having this kind of rule. I haven't done extensive research on this, so I don't know what's in place already. But in Section 4, the first subsection, I used to call it, is, seems very broad. It says, "Persons governed by this code," which is all representatives, employees, et cetera, "shall not be financially interested in any contract or purchase order for any supplies, materials, equipment, or contractual services furnished to or used by the board, agency, or commission of which that person or persons is or are a member, or of which that person or persons is or are an employee. It is further provided, notwithstanding the above, that no member of the town council shall be financially interested either directly or indirectly in any contract or purchase order for any supplies, materials, equipment, or contractual services furnished to or used by any board, agency, or commission of the town of Groton." Now, it doesn't say they have to refuse themselves. It doesn't say they have to state their conflict. It says they cannot have a conflict, period. So as I read that, and I did have a friend who's already looked over it briefly.
Do you have one minute, sir?
As I read that, it seems to say a teacher working for the Board of Education could not be on the town council, because they're in contract to the town. And it just seems so broad that it would be anyone who's involved, either working for the town in any way, or any kind of business interests, that many people could find themselves afoul of this code unintentionally. And they're working ethically, but because this is so broad, I think it's just something you may wish to examine to make sure you're not accidentally catching, possibly even members of the current council, because I don't know what all your business interests are. But certainly, some of our many employees may have other business interests that may be ethical, but would run afoul of this. Thank you very much.
No one else has signed up to speak on the Ethics Ordinance? Is there anyone here that would like to? Please come forward and state your name, please, and address for the record.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shenandoah Castle Parkway. I am too, also an RTM member that represents District 2. I'm just coming as a concerned citizen today. Reading it over, the, I'm really excited that we are starting to think a little bit in regard to code of conduct and ethics. So that's really exciting. But the way that this reads, I do have some concerns with the way that it is a little bit vague, and it would be nice to have some more wording in there to directly understand exactly, so there would be no gray areas. Some of my notes that I had taken were just in reference to nonprofit organizations and clubs. In the ordinance, the way that I'm interpreting it anyway, once again, there's a couple areas that could be interpreted a couple different ways, depending on how you read it. It, you know, talks mostly in reference to money exchange and things like that. But there are things in this town that we utilize, and once again, I'm not speaking that anybody up there is currently utilizing. I'm just thinking down the road for future council members, what have you, if we're going to enact something like this, that we consider looking at organizations and clubs, because a town councillor could be in a position where they may have a spouse, loved one, or close family member, like your ordinance states, where they might have to waive fees, or, you know, use some of our town buildings for free, and things like that. And I also, even though there's no direct money exchange in that situation, I think that that is a service and a loss of fees to the town. So I feel that there could be a way that that could be worded into this code of conduct to state such things of how do we hold ourselves in situations with nonprofit and clubs and organizations in regards to our services here as a town? You know, like not voting on certain items that you may be affiliated with or attached to. Thank you.
So anyone else here would like to speak on the Ethics Ordinance? Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on the Ethics Ordinance? I'm not sure. Is it appropriate to respond? Oh, that's right. You have a, we have a, I believe we all received the email from?
Well, I sent it to you and Mr. Bert.
Ms. Katuski, correct.
So Roseanne Katuski asked me to read this. She's not able to attend tonight. She's at 24 Ann Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. And I'll give this to you afterwards. She said, "I cannot attend the public hearing for the Ethics Ordinance. Please accept my comments below. I would like to thank the town council for drafting this Ethics Ordinance, which I support 100% and believe is long overdue. We won't know for sure how it's going to work out until after the Ethics Commission is established and begins interpreting the ordinance. However, I'm very hopeful that issues will be brought to the attention of the Commission, discussed, and changes will be made. And there are too many instances of people making financial decisions on numerous boards, commissions, committees, et cetera, who have the potential to directly benefit financially from the town of Groton. I appreciate the town council making the Ethics Ordinance a priority."
I couldn't hear who that was.
Roseanne Katuski.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Yes?
Just a note on the transparency, that right now, October 1st is our go-live date for the full Agenda software functionality, which would include much more background information in the agendas. So barring any other technical glitches, we should have it right around then. So you'll see a lot more information. And I want to give some thoughts, the comments made, and, before we, because we're not taking it up tonight anyways, I'll give some thought to the comments made tonight.
And the time was correct for the, we had two hearings tonight. The first hearing was at 6 o'clock. Second hearing was at 6:30. So the times were correct. So please make sure, before you cast a sparring, that you're sure of what you're stating. All right, and this hearing is closed at 6:44.
Know that we did have a glitch with our posting. On Friday, your meetings were posted perfectly, with agendas. Today, there was a problem. And everything was gone except a cancellation for a 6 o'clock meeting, which I don't understand, but we fixed it. We fixed it.
We are on to Roman numeral 5, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns for our regular town council meeting. Is there anyone signed up for that, Madam Clerk? Nope? Okay. Roman numeral 6. Response to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. So Roman numeral 7, consent calendar. So this is Councilor Baumgartner.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of Item 7A, 2018-251, approval of town council minutes for August 7, 2018. Item 7B, 2018-252, approval of town council special meeting minutes of August 14, 2018. And Item 7C, 2018-255, special trust fund contributions in August. I'd just like to make a quick note that the following individuals made a contribution to that account, including Lee Vincent. Bear with me. Lee Vincent, the First United Methodist Church, for social services, services, and Adrian and Bill Loewith, Groton Utilities and the City of Groton, to the Groton Utilities Energy Assistance Program. We thank those individuals and those organizations for their contributions. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the minutes? We'll start with Councilor Schmidt.
There were three typos that I found. The first one was on page 1, and it was Sue Palmer. It said, "P-R-E-P-A-D," which should be prepared statement. And then on page 6, "Resolved that the town manager or is designated is authorized to take any additional steps of necessary." I think it should be "if necessary" to effectuate the 2% increase. And on page 8, on X.5, it says, "Whereas this resolution requires the town council to give consent to the town, should be manager," they left out an "A," "to authorize any change in employment."
Thank you. Councilor Atwater?
On page 5, about two-thirds of the way down the page, under number 4, "Operation of BYOB Establishments." In reading the hours under A1, it says, "Monday through Friday, comma, between the hours of midnight and 10 a.m., between the hours of 12 a.m. and 10 a.m." And that sounds confusing to me.
And I think that was, that was fixed in the final, the final thing. It was all fixed. We had comments about that today. I have two typos on page 2 of those same minutes. Under the first full paragraph, it says, "will jeopardize." There's a typo there. And then if you bounce down to the fourth paragraph, page 2, the first full paragraph, it says, "It will jeopardize his business." Jeopardize is spelled incorrectly. And then if you bump down to the fifth full paragraph, she stated that gasp, there's an extra "A" in gasp. And I think, I think that's it. Are there any?
Patrice is, I'm sorry. It says, "Groton Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention." Shouldn't that be G.A.S.P.?
No, they go by gasp. G.A.S.P. I believe so. Is that correct, Mr. Bert? They go by gasp? Yeah. Is there anything else in any of the minutes that we needed to address? Seeing none. So we're voting on acceptance of the minutes as corrected? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Communications and reports, town councillors. Councilor Baumgartner.
I'd just like to note for the record that Barb White, Elizabeth Reisbeck, Howard and Lorraine Vices, excuse me if I'm pronouncing any name incorrectly, Dana Oviet, all support the land swap agreement as well, and were unable to attend, but submitted emails in support of the proposed land swap. And that is all.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Received numerous emails regarding the land swap. I attended the Groton Public School convocation that happened on Wednesday, the 29th. Well-attended, and I thank the school system for inviting me. And we went on the Fitch Tour this evening, Fitch Middle School Tour.
Councilor Franco?
I also received numerous letters regarding support for the Merit Property Swap, and I also took the tour of Fitch Jr.
Councilor Hede?
The same as they said. In addition, Sunday, September 16. Oh, well, actually, I guess we'll start with this one. On Sunday, September 2nd, I attended the 237th anniversary of the Battle of Groton Heights. They have a new viewing deck, so people don't have to stand on the dirt and damage the ramparts. So that was really very well, it was a good show. And then, Sunday, September 16, there's an international coastal cleanup at Bluff Point State Park. And then I had something on here that I forgot to mention. Probably you have it. There's a race on Saturday, the 8th.
The Royal Race?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't have the details.
Yeah, I don't have it with me. We'll talk about that. Councilor Aubrey?
Yes, I attended a meeting of a subcommittee of the EDC, where they were going to be talking about a, I don't say it correctly, Connoisseur's.
Concierge.
Thank you, all you French people. For the town of Groton, trying to work in conjunction with EB. It was an excellent meeting, because it turned out that both Groton, Groton City, New London, and Eastern Connecticut Chamber are all working on it. And I think they're going to work collaboratively, which is really great. So that as things go forward, like, let's say, a meeting with EB, everybody will be represented, and we'll end up with one way to go forward with it. So I think it's, it's very, it's really great. We have new people in the city, a planner and EDC person that are working very well with others. Same thing in New London. And of course, the Chamber has been working on it. So I think it has a real good future to it.
And we're going to go back to Councilor Hede briefly, because he found the date.
I'm sorry, it's right here. On Saturday, September 8th, Royal Run for Fitch High School Band. It's a fundraiser to help send them to London. It's at 8:30 a.m. at Bluff Point, and you can buy tickets at lightboxreg.com. It's a 3.6 mile race.
Very good. Councilor Atwater?
Last week, I continued attending the negotiation, contract negotiations with the teachers. This morning, I attended the Children First Groton School Witness Council, and I also went on the Fitch Tour this afternoon.
Thank you. Councilor Schmidt?
Oh, I received the same emails on the land swap. And I did receive an email about a trip on the Thames River Heritage Group on Thursday, which will be of benefit to the Thames Heritage Group. And also took the tour of Fitch Junior High, which is our new community center. And that's it.
Councilor Sprecher?
Well, I, last week, I visited with the Groton ambulance at their headquarters. They're busting at the seams. They have four ambulances that barely fit into the garage. And... busting at the seams. They have four ambulances that barely fit into the garage, and they expect that the size of ambulances will increase as time goes forward. They're essentially mobile intensive care units. So there are some growth problems there. They also have difficulty with space for training. And I think it would be very good if we made available to them the auditorium at the, our new Fitch community center. So I'd be careful about using, granting exclusive use of that to any other concern, because I think there are other, in addition to the Groton ambulance, there are other civic organizations that need that type of space to conduct essential activities. And I'd like to see us make available that space expressly to the Groton ambulance for their training purposes.
Thank you. I received the same emails regarding the land swap. I attended the Fitch tour. That was, thank you to Mr. Schneider, Mr. Locken, Mr. Barry for arranging the tour and for walking us through and letting us see what programs have moved into the building and the potential for reuse of other parts of the building. And I also received an update from Mr. Fitzgerald regarding Mystic Coastal Access Points. And I believe Mr. Burt replied to him already that we will be getting back to him as per the meeting in the, later in the fall. All right. Clerk of the representative town, or clerk of the representative town meeting.
Councilor TM will be meeting on the 12th. That's next Wednesday at the Groton Senior Center. And they have the ordinance for the BYOB. It's, it's a, it's a past ordinance. It's already approved, and they have until the 21st of September to veto. So they have an opportunity.
Clerk of the council.
You have all my correspondence.
Thank you. And town manager.
Nothing unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone have questions? Yes. Councilor Obray.
Have we moved any further for the lease for the ambulance building?
Yeah, we've had some more back and forth. As a matter of fact, we're, their attorney and I are going to meet probably next week on the 12th, so.
Thank you.
Anything from department heads? I see the superintendent has left, so. Nothing from department heads. Committee reports? We have nothing other than what you've seen here. Personnel appointments?
Did we? We met, and we approved the gentleman for the Jabez House, whose name I didn't write down.
Mr. Bliven.
We reappointed him.
Jeffrey Bliven.
Correct.
Okay. Temporary rules?
Nothing to report.
But we don't have any other agenda. I don't know for appointments.
You can go on to our next meeting. Yes?
I think I do have the name. I'm not sure if it's Jeffrey.
Yeah, Jeffrey Bliven.
Was it Jeff? Okay. I wasn't sure if it was Levinson. I remember reading that name in the packet.
Okay. So that would be appointment. We'll be on our next town council meeting, and then we have no public safety. So we're on to new business. And this is under room number 10. And we are on, Councilor Parker, this is item 156, 2018, one telecommunications collective bargaining agreement. And this is on page 33 in your packet.
To adopt a resolution approving the tentative agreement reached between the town and the Groton Telecommunicators Association, United Electrical Local 222, Connecticut Independent Labor Union Local 86, Inc., affiliated with United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America. I so move.
Do we need, excuse me one second, do we need the resolution read that's on the back of the...
Can I read that?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution approving the tentative agreement reached between, I just read that, but I will read it again, reached between the town and the Groton Telecommunicators Association, United Electrical Local 222, Connecticut Independent Labor Union Local 86, Inc., affiliated with United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America. Whereas the town and the Groton Telecommunicators Association, United Electrical Local 222, Connecticut Independent Labor Union Local 86, Incorporated, affiliated with United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America, are party to a collective bargaining agreement. And whereas the collective bargaining agreement between the two parties, between the parties expired on June 30, 2018, and whereas negotiations were completed and a tentative agreement was reached on July 20, 2018, and whereas the Groton Telecommunicators Association, United Electrical Local 222, Connecticut Independent Labor Union Local 86, Incorporated, affiliated with United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America, completed and notified the town that the tentative agreement had been ratified, and be it resolved that the successor contract has been approved and will be enforced for a period of one year, expiring June 30, 2019. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Is there any discussion on contract? Councilor Sipper.
It looks like we're doing a pro forma exercise. We, we as the council have not been informed about the details of these contracts. And they will, they will impart a cost to the taxpayer depending on what the terms are. And so it's, I think it's very difficult to, to vote on something like this at this point.
Mr. Burt.
It was while you were on. We had, we had, we discussed it during an executive session. We went through the details.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 156, 2018, telecommunications collective bargaining agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Just a note, I'll, I'll get you the details also if you have it. I'll give you an update.
No, I just, I just wanted to be sure that we're doing it, and I'm sorry that I wasn't here that night.
I'll still send you the details.
All right. So we are on to 10B, 221, 2018, updated lease agreement for TVCCA. This is on page 35, and there is a resolution on the back. Councilor Franco.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to execute revised lease agreement with the TVCCA for premises at 36, 38, and 40 Central Avenue. Whereas the Thames Valley Council of Community Action, TVCCA, has provided daycare programs and other needed social services to Groton residents in cooperation with the Town of Groton. And whereas TVCCA currently leases from the Town of Groton the premises at 36, 38, and 40 Central Avenue, where TVCCA operates children programs, and whereas the leases were revised so that the language in each lease was consistent with one another and clarified the maintenance responsibilities of each party. And whereas revised leases now have the same term, which begins and ends with the town's fiscal year, now therefore be it resolved that John Burt, town manager, may execute the revised leases on the premises at 36, 38, and 40 Central Avenue to TVCCA for daycare purposes for long term, ending June 30, 2026. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Is there discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 221, 2018, updated lease agreements for TVCCA, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 223, 2018, town property sale of a portion of knowing school public garden property and setting of the public hearing. Councilor Heath.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the sale of town-owned property, whereas the Town of Groton is the owner of real property, pin number 260819714055, commonly referred to as knowing school public gardens. And whereas the town was approached by Mike Speller, Speller, I'm sorry, the co-owner of neighboring property to request a sale of 0.09 acre portion of the knowing school public gardens property to him, now therefore be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing for state statute 7-163E for the sale of real property owned by the town on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. And to direct the town clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the reference statute. And be it further resolved that the town council refers the sale of town-owned property to the planning commission pursuant to CGS Section 8-24. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heath and seconded by Baumgartner. Discussion. Councilor Obray.
Is there anything special planned for the funds?
No, there's nothing planned. Just go in the general fund unless designated otherwise.
I thought it was going into, what was it going into?
Pay for spite that was wrong.
One thing, one thing that occurred to me is there's a property we're going to do some cleanup. We might have to pay ourselves up front and then try to seek reimbursement. It might be nice to establish a fund, or we have some funds that could then be recouped. That's one idea. But we could have, when we get to the public hearing, we could have some discussion on what to do with the money. But if nothing's done, the general fund is where it would go, so.
Good. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 223, 2018, town property sale of a portion of knowing school public garden property, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 219, 2018, the extension of the effective date for the Planning and Zoning Commission merger. Councilor Obray, and I believe this is, begins on 39, but the resolution is on page 40, please.
Resolution extending the effective date of ordinance number 286 for the designation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing. On June 20, 2017, the town council passed ordinance number 286 to designate the Planning Commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission and to abolish the zoning commission effective January 4, 2019. And whereas the public hearing concern was raised by staff and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission as to whether the allotted time was adequate to rewrite the zoning regulations, make the required referral and conduct the, and conduct the public hearing, and whereas this date, the regulation rewrite is approximately 65% completed, and whereas it is anticipated that the regulations will be written by January 2019, and whereas the required public hearing notifications and public hearing will extend well beyond the current ordinance's effective date, and whereas the zoning commission is willing to serve the extra time to complete the rewrite project, and whereas the regulation rewrite can be completed by July 31, 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the time period for the designation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and abolishing of the zoning commission is hereby extended to July 31, 2019, and be it further resolved that a public hearing will be scheduled for October 2, 2018, to change the effective date of ordinance number 286. I so move.
Second. Moved by Obray and seconded by Atwater. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of 219, 2018, the extension of the effective date for the Planning and Zoning Commission merger, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to 225, 218, the water pollution control procurement and logistics assistant. And this is page 42 is actually where the resolution is. Councilor Atwater.
Resolution approving revised job description for the Water Pollution Control Division of the Public Works Department. Whereas the town has a vacancy in the Water Pollution Control Division, which has yet to be filled, and whereas procurement and logistics is a critical function within the Water Pollution Control District of the Public Works Department, and there is necessity to enhance the job description to include knowledge for both today and future use of technology. And whereas the revisions of the job description have been suggested by the Director of Public Works, and the position will continue to evolve to keep in step with technological demands, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the revised job description for the Water Pollution Control Division Procurement and Logistics Assistant. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of 225, 2018, Water Pollution Control Procurement and Logistics Assistant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are down to item room number 11, other businesses. Is there any other business to come before the council? Councilor Franco.
I just wanted to mention that the Beadification Committee will meet on Monday, September 10, at 5:30 at the Groton Public Library.
Thank you. Councilor Obray.
I just wanted to make a request if we could, if I could. I think it would be good if any of us decide to go and talk to somebody about things that we're discussing, that maybe we could have kind of a synopsis of it before we meet so that we might be more informed. Like Joe go into the ambulance. It's good that he went, but share that information. Rachel went to, I don't know, something else recently. And it would just be good that, you know, we get information from that.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the communication, so that he filled us in. If you would like more detail, then I would say then, I'm sure if you reached out to Councilor Sipper or Franco, they'd be happy to share in much more detail with you any information that they had, correct?
I gave you meaningful detail already.
Okay.
Okay, no problem. I just think that we have some little lapses in information.
Councilor Atwater.
Following up on what Councilor Obray is saying, I would think it would make more sense if somebody wants to go and speak to someone like the police department or the ambulance or whatever, that they clear it through the town manager, and he could then inform us that so-and-so is going, would you like to join him? And accomplishes two things. It has John approve who we're bothering or seeing or whatever, but it also makes it available to those of us that would be interested.
That's a good idea. I know that we try to give that courtesy when we're trying to meet with any town officials. So perhaps we can extend that as well if we're talking to other people. Are you acceptable to be the clearinghouse?
That's fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. All entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We are adjourned at 7:10.